I'm feeling like I've been here in a while.
I know.
Jody will talk to them. He said, hey.
Last couple of mixed threes.
Well, and there's more people in here, too. I find that generates security as well. Also for Christmas tickets. So if you have any grandparents coming up, too.
There's like the most service and the fly lines. I lost Joelle. So they can't produce them.
Rockets are pens.
A lot, too.
I just don't want to watch. No.
I love all that.
No handshaking. Sure, sure. Yeah, we can just kind of stand over by.
Oh, this is so exciting. I love the tennis team.
Oh, that's good.
Usually we take a picture. Unless you don't want to.
Yeah, no, no, I was just thinking she's going to take a picture right there. I thought you were saying we need to go outside. Yeah, one group at a time. I'll bring my mug over. Well, that's how puppies are right here. But I can see her. All right, we got everybody here. Uh, yeah, a little disruptive for the others.
You don't need this happening for a while. A lot going on right now.
It's okay, you look nice. And we're not wearing the same thing.
I know, because we're not wearing the same thing. All right. You guys good?
Holly, you actually need your gavel.
Okay.
You actually.
Okay. There we go. Can we convene our meeting to open session? Uh, the board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss a contractual matter, um, a tenure candidate and a student matter. We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Catherine Natto.
Will O'Beir.
Wendy Sampson.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Dellenbaum.
Christine Beck.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Meredith Marjorie.
And Judy Kejo.
Uh, first on the agenda is approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the December 1st, 2021 regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next, our meeting reports, and first up is our superintendent's report.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so I wanted to just do a couple COVID protocol and updates from our reopening committee and also some information regarding quarantine and information from the Department of Health. Uh, so I think I mentioned at our last meeting that we had received guidance from Albany County Department of Health for individuals who are quarantined, or students, rather, who are quarantined, uh, who are able to test out of quarantine after seven days if they're asymptomatic. Uh, we did put information out about that to parents. We reviewed at our reopening committee, uh, in regards to parents can go get a test if their child is asymptomatic who are quarantined, submit it to the school nurse, and the school nurse will, uh, review it and confirm the individual can come back to school on day eight. So that is a change recently. Also, as part of the decisions from the reopening group, we talked about facilities use, and prior to this meeting, we said only B.C. students in the youth groups could be a part of those using our facilities. However, we did have requests for, from families whose students do not attend B.C. but might attend a private school but are B.C. residents to allow them to participate with their peers. The group did decide to allow that. Um, however, the other decision that was made was that students participating in those groups, as well as coaches and instructors, do need to be vaccinated and have at least their first dose by January 10th. And we communicated that out and shared that with the groups who are currently using our facilities. We also agreed for those individual groups to allow two spectators per student for competitions, uh, again, following COVID protocols. Uh, so at this time, I also want to recognize, before we get to our athletes, who many of are here tonight, and it's great to see all of you, I'd like to congratulate one of our high school students, Romeo Vaschitz, who was named as to WMHT's Classical Student of the Month. Uh, he's a ninth grader, and, um, he's featured in the interview, and there's a video on our website, and if you haven't seen it, it is very impressive, uh, for a ninth grade student, so congratulations to him. And now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Keys to recognize our student athletes from the fall.
Good evening, everyone, and, uh, thank you, Ms. Monroe. Uh, we had an exciting fall, and, uh, as we know, uh, at the end of each season, we like to recognize outstanding teams and outstanding accomplishments. Uh, before I bring out our first teams, just wanted to mention that we had a great, uh, scholarly athletic fall. Each year, our goals be recognized by NISFA as a school of distinction, and this fall we had boys and girls cross-country, field hockey, girls golf, boys golf, girls soccer, girls swim and dive, girls tennis, uh, were all recognized by NISFA as scholar athlete teams. So round of applause for these great student athletes. That being said, I would like to introduce our first team, our varsity girls tennis team, coached by Scott George and assisted by Dylan Davis. A historic season, running a record of 15-0, suburban council regular season champions, section-two champions, regional champions, and got an invitation through the regional championship to the very first ever girls team, New York State Public High School state championships down at the USTA Center down in Flushing Meadows. So historic season, great job, ladies. So at this time, girls, I'm going to ask when I call your name to please come up, and you're going to just kind of line up right here in front of the cables, and we'll get some pictures. Susanna Amorbeekian. Isabel Brand. Madeline Brand. Hope Brown. Paige Davenport. Audrey Henson. Kripa Handaghi. Natalie Hui. Shayna Hui. Archie Concha. Lika Kobe. Elizabeth Craig. Emma Yu. Purvi Patel. Zara Patterson. Anna Pelis. Kirsten Fang. Katherine Tebow. Nina Vargas. And Jeanvier Valero. I also wanted to mention that we had great individual recognition here. The doubles team of Zara Patterson and Anna Pelis were the section-two finalists this year and in the double A's, and as a result of that, that qualified the girls for the state doubles tournament, where they actually did win their first round and put up a valiant effort in the second round. So congratulations to the girls and to the entire team, coaches George and Davis. Great job. Good job, ladies. Next team I'd like to recognize is our girls swim and dive team, coached by Carrie Anne Santacola, or dive coach Megan Plans. And we had quite a few outstanding performances. The girls did a great job all season, very competitive team, young team. We had section champions, so I'd like to bring up Maddie Ferrera. Maddie was the 200 IM and the 100 Fly section champion. She was also part of the 200 Free Relay. She was a state qualifier in the 200 IM relays, as well as the 200 Free Relay, and Maddie was also the section-two scholar athlete of the meet, and also qualified in the 100 Fly and the 200 IM. So Maddie is very busy. Congratulations on an outstanding season, Maddie. And we have another for Katie Ferrera, section champion. Come on up, Katie. Part of that 200 Free Relay team. Katie was a state qualifier in that 200 IM relay, as well as the 200 Free Relay, and Katie was a state qualifier in the 500 Free, the 200 Free, the 200 IM, the 100 Backstroke, and she placed sixth in the 500 Free and the 200 IM. So Katie was also very tired at the end of that. Congratulations. I'd like to bring up Courtney Sorbello. Courtney was a member of the 200 IM relay team along with Katie and Maddie. And I'd also like to bring up Hannah Frontheiser. Hannah is part of that section championship-winning 200 Free Relay team. She was a state qualifier in the 200 IM relay, as well as the 100-meter breaststroke, and part of the 200 Free Relay. So congratulations, Hannah, on an awesome season. I'd like to call up senior Maya Earlywine. Maya has been a tremendous diver for our program. She, of course, qualified for dive and actually came in sixth place in all of state, so congratulations, Maya, on an outstanding career, as well as an outstanding effort at states. And I'd like to bring up Katie Valerian, who was a state qualifier in the 100-meter backstroke. Congratulations, ladies. Who are you guys? Oh, my God, Sal Bonisco, I'm so sorry. Sal is a section champion in the 200 Free Relay and also a state qualifier in the 200 Free Relay. I am so sorry, Sal. I thought I was brilliant with my color coding, but apparently, uh, I missed it. Sorry, Sarah. Okay. The next team, next athletes I'd like to recognize are our girls cross-country team, coached by Tucker Shrapowitski. An outstanding team season, and we had a couple of outstanding individual accomplishments, but I did want to recognize that our girls were the section-two Class A championship runners-up, and just recently came in third place overall in the New York State Federation Championships. These are not small feats and small accomplishments. These are huge. This is a historically great season, and, um, and this team is really going to be giving Saratoga battles for the years to come. So congratulations on a great season. I'd like to, um, call up our, uh, state qualifiers, our state championship qualifiers, Riley Davis. Come on up, Riley. And Catherine Danigan. Great job, girls. And last but never least, girls soccer coached by Tom Rogan. We were thrilled, and she's such a well-deserving athlete. Ruth Hotel, and come on up, Ruth. Ruth was named all-state by the New York State Sports Writers Association for Class A, and Ruth caps off an amazing career here for Bethlehem, so congratulations, Ruth. Tom, you can come up, take a picture. Now you're shy. Congratulations to our athletes, our coaches, and happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you. I'm going to head down.
It was so nice to see people.
Congratulations to all of our athletes, and thanks for coming and joining us tonight. They're running for the door.
I know.
Do you want me to wait a second and let him?
Yeah. Give him a minute. I'll say something.
Um, and to wrap up my superintendent's report, I just wanted to remind everyone that this Saturday, we are having our Holiday Caring and Sharing Drive. Uh, we currently have collected over $12,000 to support these efforts. I'd like to thank Kathy Johnston and Sherri Fitzpatrick in special education for helping to spearhead and organize these efforts that will directly benefit our B.C. families. And last but not least, I'd like to take a moment to wish everyone a happy holiday season and new year. I appreciate everything our students, staff, and families have done this fall to keep our schools open and slowly bring back some normalcy to our lives, which we just experienced, uh, just a minute ago. Uh, while it's unfortunate we are seeing some setbacks, I remain hopeful that 2022 will see better days ahead, so thank you. That's my report.
Thanks, Jody. Anybody have any questions for Jody?
Uh, next up is our board report. Um, and first, I just wanted to echo, um, Jody's comments about the Caring and Sharing Drive. I wanted to say thank you to everybody who has been involved with that. I came by on Tuesday morning, uh, to drop a few things off, and based on the palettes of things that were being collected, um, I also want to thank the community for their generosity, um, because it really is outstanding. Um, I think we might still have a couple of pig students who've lingered out there in the audience. If I am correct, uh, you guys are, need to stay until nine o'clock or until the meeting is over, and if you need a signature, um, you can see any board member at the end of the meeting. Um, I also wanted to congratulate Amy Wouse and the cast and crew of the high school play that was up this past weekend. Um, everybody did a great job and looked like they really were having a great time, um, which is, uh, I think even more important. And then lastly, I also wanted to wish everybody a happy winter break and a happy holiday to those who celebrate. If anybody has anything else they would like to share?
Does anybody know, like, I was supposed to see the show this past weekend, but I ended up getting home late from my trip. Do you know if they streamed it at all, or if you can view it online at all?
I, I don't think that they did.
Okay.
I don't think they had the permissions to do that.
Yeah.
All right. I'm sorry I missed it. I'm glad it turned out well. Anything else?
And I just wanted to thank our staff and students and wish everybody a happy holiday, and those that have already celebrated their holidays, that I hope it was good.
I just wanted to say that I was also able to see Puffs, uh, this weekend, and I thought everyone did a phenomenal job. It was really wonderful to see kids on stage again, um, see the audience enjoying it. I love the fact that it was a play that younger kids could enjoy as well. I know a lot of community members came out to see it, so I just wanted to thank everyone involved in that and say congratulations, because it was a great job.
Uh, next on our agenda is our student reports. Do we have anybody from the high school senate? Can come on up to, oh, where'd the microphone go?
Hello? Cool. Uh, the middle school inspired me to come prepared with notes. Like, two weeks ago, I felt very unprepared, and they showed me up. So, um, as mentioned before, our big, exciting stuff is the Caring and Sharing Food Drive. We've been collecting for the past three weeks, um, here at the middle school, or here at the high school, middle school, and our four, five elementary schools. Um, we're packing on Friday, which is going to be a big event in the A gym. We're super excited for that senate is putting on, as well as other clubs are going to come help pack those bags, and then, uh, again, as stated, they're being delivered or handed out on Saturday. Um, we've gotten too many donations from, uh, the community, as well as students here. We're running out of space in the backpack room. You can barely walk in, um, which is a great problem to have. Uh, we've just been overwhelmed with the generosity, as said before. Uh, during the food drive, we also collected coats, um, which has been super helpful. We have a full pallet of donated coats that are in great condition that we're looking to give out before it gets too cold. Thankfully, the weather has been allowing us to do that, saying so well. Um, last meeting, we approved three clubs. The, oh, now I'm going to blank. Um, I'm so sorry. It was the inclusivity literacy club, the, uh, oh, God. Oh, recreational puzzle club, like chess, checkers, things like that. Um, and the last one was marine biology club, um, which we're all excited to get those off the ground. Um, last meeting, we also had a student come to us with an issue. Um, he created a presentation, he, uh, collected stats, um, and petitions around the school, and presented those statistics to us. Um, although the issue that he was advocating to fix, we weren't able to do anything about. We were able to get a formal statement from Mr. Dohmell to give back to him, and, um, it was just super nice to see an active student body, um, and allowing us to, like, really connect the students to administration in such a productive and healthy way. Um, those are all my updates. I can answer questions if you have any.
Was the, um, issue or concern something you can share?
I think so. It was, uh, the tech department took away, I'm going to have a hard time explaining this. The, um, little icons were, for our Google accounts, used to be pictures that we chose, and that privilege was unfortunately abused by a lot of kids, putting inappropriate messages and pictures and such, so the tech department, uh, just created, or generalized them to just a color with our initial on them. Um, most kids didn't have an issue with it, but as of, like, anything, change is difficult, and some people didn't like that. Um, but unfortunately, like, the kids who were abusing the power, obviously, weren't able to, like, took away the privilege for everyone, um, which is understandable, but it was great to see students, like, out in the high school collecting statistics, signing petitions, trying to get change, even though it wasn't necessarily, uh, didn't pay off in this particular situation.
Well, it sounds like it was a really great mechanism for the student body to be heard with the student senate, and so whatever the senate is doing to foster those relationships, it sounds like it's working, so keep up the good work, so that the students feel comfortable coming and bringing those issues, so they can at least be addressed and looked into. And I think that's great, so thank you for sharing that with us.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for your time, and happy holidays.
Thanks.
You're very well-prepared.
Uh, do we have anybody from the middle school here tonight? You guys can come up to the microphone. And if you need to, uh, adjust the microphone, if you need any help with that, maybe somebody can.
Help them with it.
Help you guys. Or talk loud.
Hi, I'm Reagan.
Oh, hold on one second. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Hi, I'm Reagan.
Hi, I'm Ellie Danz.
And we are from Middle School Student Council.
So updates of the spirit days are having. This Friday is holiday pajama day. Next Monday is warm and cozy. Tuesday is holiday head to toe. Wednesday is color wars. Sixth grade is red, seventh grade is white, and eighth grade is green. Thursday is a gray sweater day. Another thing is that we have been doing a hero of the month. This month, season B Anthony won over Jim Thor, Pocahontas, and Abigail Adams.
Our holiday caring and sharing food drive ends this Thursday, and we're excited to organize all the donations that have come in thus far. We invite to thank all the families who have participated. Middle School has begun ordering our free character t-shirts, and we just surpassed 375 orders. We're hoping to have as many students as possible place orders before the ordering is close on December 23rd.
The middle school bands, choruses, and orchestras in sixth, seventh, and eighth grades are planning to have their first performance since the start of the pandemic. They're scheduled for these in January on the 11th, 13th, and 18th.
Thanks, guys. Anybody have any questions?
I'm curious which character traits each of you chose for your t-shirts.
I chose bravery.
And I chose gratitude.
Awesome. Great choices.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
You, too.
Happy holidays.
Uh, next on our agenda is our presentation this evening. Um, we're having a presentation on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I'll turn it over to you, Jody.
So Mr. Hurst and I are going to tag team this, and Harriet Grosbener is on the Zoom. You can see her in the corner. Hi, Harriet.
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays.
Thanks for joining us this evening. So we wanted to update the board, uh, about some of our work regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion over the last couple of years, and, um, I think it's important to note, uh, the purpose of this work. One of the reasons, if you look at the charts here, you'll see the changing demographics of our student population. In looking at in 2000, about a little over 95% of our student population was white.
And looking at in 2000, about a little over 95% of our student population was white. And you can see the shift in that in 2020, 21. We have about 84% of our students who are white, 7% who are Asian-American, 3% who are Black or African-American, 4% who are Hispanic or Latino, and 3% who are multiracial. So you can see the shift in regards to not only addressing our own student population and the changing demographics, but also thinking about when we developed our strategic plan, the purpose of preparing students for a more global world that they will be entering when they leave Bethlehem. So next slide. And this is an interesting slide. It's a little video that shows the changing demographics in public schools over the course of time. So again, just a visual to reinforce the importance of this work as we prepare our students to leave Bethlehem and go out into all different areas for their futures. So some of our areas that we've been focusing our work on for diversity, equity, and inclusion are all of these different populations of students. And I'm not going to read through them, but we have talked about them at length in various different discussions. Also to note is the New York State Education Department did come out with standards or recommendations for DEI and what districts should be considering. Actually, two days ago, I did present to represent Bethlehem to the Board of Regents to talk about some of our efforts. And actually, this handout at your table is what I provided the Board of Regents at that, to just lay out our timeframe. And, you know, when I went back and looked at that, I hadn't really thought about when we began. In 2016 is actually when we began some of this work. And we really didn't know where we were going. We didn't know where to start. But I think that if you look at that timeframe, we have made some substantial advances. Still, with work to do, for sure. But we have made some gains in this area. So I think it's worth noting those timeframes. This is just breaking it down a little bit further to, for where we started in 2016 and 17. As I said, this really started in, for those who weren't on the board at that time, we had a small group of students at the high school who came to meet with us to talk about some of their experiences in the high school. And wanted, they were a group from Awana, who Dr. Lisa Carr had organized and asked, suggested that they meet with some of us. And they talked about things such as the touching of their hair and comments that were made in hallways or in the cafeteria and sometimes overheard by staff but not addressed. And I think the real crux of that came down to staff didn't know how to address some of those issues. And that's been something we've been talking about ongoing, really since that time. In 2017, 18, we started to develop our action plans. We expanded our staff committee. In 18 and 19, we began sharing more of this work with the faculty. We also created a vision statement. And this is where we engaged a consultant. We had engaged some prior individuals to help us with this, but this is where we really started to formalize our plan a little bit more. And in 2019, 20, we began working with Generation Ready, which Harriet was a part of at that time. And we grew our committee to represent all areas of the buildings across the district to make sure that we had good representation. We also started looking more formally at our English and Social Studies curriculums, looking at other curriculum changes, particularly in our library program. And that's the year Harriet had done some training with the board regarding some of this work. We also, last year, because we couldn't do in-person groups, Harriet engaged students, parents, and staff for some work in Bridging the Divide sessions. The board adopted the anti-racism policy last year. And we've made more significant changes to our ELA and Social Studies curriculum at both the middle school and high school. And finally, this year, obviously, we're still in the midst of the year, but the board did establish the District Level Equity and Inclusivity Committee, which Harriet is facilitating. We are looking at continuing to build our action plans that were developed as a result of our audits prior to COVID. And we're doing some professional development to continue work with students with disabilities. And also, we did some training on a larger scale on conference day about implicit bias for the various departments. So we have the Bethlehem Committee for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, which was established in 2017, which really is a group of staff members kind of doing the work in the buildings that needs to be done, looking at our school climate, looking at our hiring practices and professional development. Our district committee involves 20-plus stakeholders that includes students, faculty, staff, parents, board members, and administrator who serve more in advisory role to have more broader conversations about what the district can do, what the community can do, and try to make those connections as we move forward. So I'm going to turn the next few slides over to Dave to talk about academics and character as they relate to some of this work.
Okay, so thank you. So in the academic area, again, sort of two overarching themes. One is striving for culture proficiency, and then the other is updating our curriculum to reflect that. But sort of within that, as we're updating the curriculum, keep in mind that, you know, we're trying to create a curriculum that presents multiple viewpoints, but also ensuring that the students that are in front of us, that we're speaking to them, right? So this work really can't happen without developing deep relationships with students and families because it's hard to sort of address their needs or address their cultures if you don't know where they're coming from. So building relationships is a large part of the academic work. So just some highlights that we've been making changes. And the English and Social Studies seems to have gotten a lot of the press over the last couple of years, but, you know, there's been changes in other departments as well. So for instance, art, you know, we've changed our focus from some of the classic historical artists to more contemporary artists from different genres to really try to capture, you know, different types of art for students. And also, we've moved towards a much more choice-based art program where student voice and choice becomes a much greater part in terms of what it is that they choose to design regardless of what the medium happens to be. And so as we've mentioned before, English Language Arts, we've expanded our literary collection quite a bit to ensure that we're addressing texts, we're incorporating texts that address a wide variety of topics and demographics to, so that we have more diverse backgrounds, again, to speak to the students that are in front of us. We also adopted last year the Seal of Biliteracy, which is a new sort of diploma significance that New York State began about four years ago now. So students have, they have to accumulate so many points in different world languages, and then they're allowed to have this seal on their diploma. And we had 21 students achieve this in the first year, which is quite a remarkable accomplishment. And we are hoping to grow this program, or 27 students, rather, and we're hoping to grow this program even further in the coming years. And before we move off academics, one thing I did want to mention, too, is not only is sort of equity about changing and diversity about what's changing the curriculum itself, but also keeping in mind that students have to have access to this curriculum, right? So it's not enough to just offer a wider variety of curriculum or a diverse curriculum. If all students don't have access to it, then you're doing it a service, right? So as I mentioned during my academic update, for instance, like our AP courses, we have in the area the highest percentage rates of students accessing AP courses. And that's because we don't have restrictive prerequisites like other districts. Like, as I mentioned at that time, we're similar in size to Niskunia, but we have twice as many students taking AP exams. We're half the size, almost a third the size of Shenandoah, and we have as many students accessing those exams. So it's not just about the course offerings themselves, but ensuring that you have policies in place so that students can access these courses without having barriers put forth in front of them. So character, so obviously providing opportunities for innovative, inclusive, and culturally responsive teaching and learning. And, you know, part of what it is that we're trying to do is, again, reach students where they are, get to know students, have students get to know one another, get to know families. And that's where this work happens within our overall social, emotional, and with our character education programming. So as Jody mentioned, in our timeline, you know, one of the ways that we were able to reach out to both students and community was through the Bridging Divide workshops. We ran a set of workshops, we had two parent workshops in the winter and one student workshop. And then we had two more parent and one more student in the spring. So quite an extensive opportunity for parents and students to engage in this work. We had just shy of 120 parents participate and about 40 students participate. So this was, you know, a great way for them to engage in the work and, again, for students, you know, building character through this work. So along those lines, and also as Jody mentioned, the timeline, prior to engaging with Generation Ready, we had several sort of standalone professional development opportunities where we had experts in the field come in and speak to us on various topics. We started with just learning more about implicit bias, microaggressions, diversity, tolerance, and equity. And again, that grew directly out of what the students brought to us in that initial meeting. Those are the areas that they specifically spoke of. And then we had a follow-up, very similar presentation from Greg Owens. And then we were very fortunate to have Rennan Kudletz come in and speak to all of our levels about transgender, gender non-conforming, and LGBTQ plus issues. And that was very, very well-received by the faculty. Again, this goes back to some of the points that students made at our initial meeting about sometimes faculty overhearing things and not knowing how to respond appropriately. So this very much spoke to faculty about that, how to respond to these issues. We also had a faculty presentation from students themselves, where they created actual videos to sort of represent their voice, to be able to share with faculty. And then finally, we had an expert from the Center for Workplace Solutions come in and work with the administration over the summer to help us with our, not just internal practices, but in terms of our hiring. At that time, we then developed an entirely new hiring handbook with a focus on ensuring that we're doing implicit bias training and outreach efforts to try to diversify our workforce. And I'll turn it back over to Jody.
Thanks, Dave. And on to community. This is an area that we hope to expand upon. Obviously, some of our goals, as Dave mentioned, is to retain and develop a diverse faculty and staff. And also, a primary responsibility that we have is also partnering with our community, and not just our parents, but our larger community, so that they understand the purpose of this work. They can hear some of the student voices that it's easier for us to hear, not always as visible or apparent to community members who may not be as connected to our school district. So some of the, this highlights some of the languages that are represented in our district. There has been a shift over the years where we have a more diverse population. Some of the things we've done to try and engage our parents and our community is we introduced the Lexic key parent portal to help provide with translation. We also, the E and L department has implemented a family newsletter with translation as well. And we are, as I've mentioned in the past, doing a redesigned website that will have improved accessibility for all users to be able to navigate. And anyone with a disability should be able to use our website. And we have a little clip so you can get an idea. When Dave mentioned what some of our students shared with faculty, there's always real power in hearing from the students because that's where you hear how much of a difference some of this work makes. So can you play that video for me?
Thanks, Dave. As an Asian-American, I find AAP a wonderful way to recognize my family's past. And for everyone in the BC community, I hope you take the special time to learn more about Asian and Pacific Island culture. Thank you.
So as Dave mentioned, and we've shared, one of the things that is part of our committee work, we've done a lot of different short recordings or videos of students' own experience or their family's own experience, and that, I think, is very powerful. We also have many clubs that address equity and inclusivity that students do have a role in this work. Students have a lot of power in the work that this does with their peers. So trying to give them a voice in the high school, in the middle school, and even the elementary, although clubs don't exist, there are ways, and even in the elementary schools, that students can share their voices and their experience.
Thanks, Dave. As an
Also, the Bridge to College. Many of you are familiar with this. This is a mentoring program for first-generation students who are interested in post-secondary opportunities. This year, the third cohort will graduate from this program. There's 19 students currently in a class of 2022. This year, all the mentors are BC staff or counselors. However, in the past, we have had a lot of community members offering to assist as well, which has been great. Nicole Conway, Scott Carlton, and Dr. Lisa Carr really lead this program. But the feedback we've had, not only from students but their families, have been very positive. And wellness. We often don't think about wellness in regards to some of the diversity and equity work, but I think we all know, especially coming, dealing with the pandemic, student and staff wellness is a huge component to school. And making sure that students are well, both emotionally and physically, are a big part of success in school and beyond. So some of the areas that maybe you have not heard of is in the middle school, we have a reward shop that was established. And this includes intensive skills students who partner with peer models to fill school-wide character and kindness initiatives. During the lunch period, middle school students are rewarded with tickets, which can be traded in for, everyone loves prizes, especially middle school students. At the elementary level, in our intensive skills program at Eagle, or Elsmeier, I'm sorry, we have teachers' helpers where these students learn lifetime skills and interact and collaborate with not only additional adults, but their peers as well. So really, the goal is to unite students of all abilities in shared goals and responsibilities. And also, we have our Unified Sports Program, which we began a few years ago. And last year, the Unified Sports, the bowling team, did quite well. That's a picture of them and their success. But this offers an opportunity not only for students with disabilities, but for their peers to work with them. And this has been an incredibly successful program. I think when we started it, we weren't really sure how well it would develop, but it really has engaged students of all levels and abilities to become peers and peer helpers here at the high school. And it's just a great program overall. So that's a summary of many years of work, just trying to highlight some of the things that we that we've been doing. Certainly, we have more work to do, as I mentioned, but I think that we have made progress in these areas and will continue to work to improve in those areas. So any questions people have for Dave, myself, or Harriet on the screen?
I know, we used to have, on the website at least, there was like a place where we had put some information about some of the work that we were doing. I would just suggest that with the website revamp-
Yep.
-that we make that easier to find-
Yeah.
-and update it so that it is, it contains everything that has been taking place, like this document does. That would be great.
Yep.
And then, Dave, I had a quick question for you, which was, just whether, would it be possible for us to get a list of kind of what some of the other texts are in the English curriculum in particular?
For sure. Now, actually-
I mean, you had a couple up there.
Yeah, mentioning the website too, that's probably a good place to have sort of a running list of all of the different texts that we've adopted over the last few years. Not just because of this initiative, but in general, these are the texts that students are exposed to at different grade levels.
Yeah, just to be interested at some point, that'd be great. Anyone else have questions?
Just to piggyback on what you had said about the website and having a site where that information's accessible. So for like the workshops, there was a lot of like faculty workshops and other events that staff attended. Is there information from those workshops that would be able to be housed on this site that we could share with community members so that we could expand on it? Like, I know it's for faculty and continuous education, but some of it is applicable to the community. I just don't know if it's copyrighted, but if it's something that we could share-
Sure.
-with a larger audience, that would be great.
Yeah, we can look at that. Some of it we might be able to, and some of it we may not be.
But if we can, I think if we're gonna make that website more robust, that would be a way to do it.
Yeah, I mean, articles, articles and videos, we could certainly share.
Yeah.
Activities would be, without context, wouldn't make a lot of sense, but articles- Articles and videos, we could definitely share.
Yeah. And then that workshop would look great, that four-part workshop where students and parents attended, and it sounded like the parents, there was a larger turnout with them versus the student. Is there any way to look at the curriculum and see if there's ways to integrate some of those workshops into other areas in the academic setting? Just to get some of the, like, really strong points out that maybe because we want the students to attend, but maybe they're not getting out for that full presentation, maybe there's tidbits that we could incorporate in other areas.
So Harriet led those, facilitated those workshops for the parents and the students, so maybe Harriet, you could speak to how some of those sessions would translate into some of the academics. And I know, we didn't mention this, but Harriet also has worked with our English and Social Studies departments to help them with some of the changes in their curriculum, so she may be the best one to address that.
Sure, there definitely are activities that could be utilized within the classroom settings. I know currently, many of your faculty members are utilizing those in their staff developments within the buildings. For example, I received an email from Jennifer Lewis the other day in which they wanted to incorporate one of the activities that had been previously done by the members of the D E I committee into a faculty workshop. So there are definitely opportunities for that. In regards to the work that was previously done with the curriculum, it should also be noticed that one of the things that I work with your faculty on is being able to utilize the material that is presently being offered in the curriculum, and particularly things that have historically been part of the canon through a new lens in order to include voices that are usually ignored or marginalized into being part of the conversations. So how do you form questions? How do you include people who may not necessarily be reflected in the text, but they can be part of the conversation? And how do you allow all students, regardless of their background, their socioeconomic status, their position in society, to be able to make meaning regardless of what's being studied? So a lot of the work has been focused around that, so that all questions can be part of the conversation, and that nothing has to be off limits because it doesn't necessarily speak specifically to one group or another. There are ways of making it inclusive for everybody.
And that leads to my last question on the, I think there was like five or six different continuing ed for faculty days, conference days. Was it 100% participation in those faculty days? Was it only some, like, and is it all faculty, or is it just teacher-specific, or is it trickled down to like other areas?
So some of them were larger-scale sessions, like Harriet had done a couple for our, what was our last conference day, the fall?
It was entire levels at a time.
Yeah. And then the one I mentioned that we did this fall was actually run by one of our teachers with E L A Social Studies and Special Ed. The transgender training was done for all levels, and we also did that for some of the support staff. The one area that I do think, and I think I've mentioned this before, that we need to do more training with because it's been limited with COVID and also with time, is with our support staff. So certainly, additional training with our faculty, but our support staff is a group of individuals, it's a large group of individuals, who often are interacting with kids in more casual environments, in the lunchrooms, in the hallways. So that would be kind of a focus that we want to do moving forward, is to offer some more training in that area with with that group as well.
Yeah, I was specifically thinking like food staff-
Yeah.
-transportation-
Exactly.
-custodians, who have those casual interactions and looking on like the unconscious biases and-
Yep.
-things like that that they normally wouldn't get in their everyday, like, work-life.
Right, absolutely.
Which would be great to make sure we do that. And that was it. That was all my questions.
Anybody else have questions?
Have we done a, I'm sorry, have we done a school climate survey recently?
We're doing that after the holidays. Last year, we did just a very short, I think 10 or 12 questions for middle and high school to just gauge how are they doing overall with their mental health and emotional stability. This year, we will be doing the full school climate survey, which goes to students, five through 12, parents and staff. We're just working on the links, we're doing it through EdVistas, no tokens this year, if you remember the tokens. And that will be done in January, so we'll have that data. And there are questions, the nice thing with the school climate survey, there are questions related to classroom instruction in some of the curriculum. Does this reflect my background? Does this reflect my culture? I feel that that's represented in the curriculum, so there is some information that we can gather from that.
Yeah, I just had two questions. The first is, you pointed out that we're working on updating hiring guidelines, and I was wondering if you could go into some detail about what we're doing on that front.
So we updated the hiring guidelines three or four years ago now. So before folks even sit on any of any committee are required to watch an anti-bias video, they're required to read through the guidebook. But the guidebook itself also speaks to how committees are set up, what qualifies or disqualifies you from being on a committee, things of that nature. But it's, I mean, it's a pretty substantial guide. Some of the board members that have served on hiring committees have seen it. I'd say it's about 20 pages long, so it's pretty substantial.
Wonderful. And then where are we, how are we looking at where we recruit from and what kind of, I know this is a big conversation in the world today, what are we thinking about that?
So we have increased our outreach to, in trying to get student teachers from colleges that are historically not just white, for lack of a better way of putting it, and that has not proven to be successful. I mean, this is a challenge, not just for us, but even schools with very diverse student populations are having a hard time attracting diverse candidates in from the teacher pool. First, the teacher pool itself is not diverse at all, so it's very limited in what you can pull from. Second, I know some schools, I don't know if there was one locally or not, but I think it was Albany, actually, they went to, did a big recruiting fair down in Washington, D.C., and we were able to get four or five diverse candidates. And I think after the first year, they lost all but one of them because the city experience of Albany was not what they were hoping for, right? They were used to Washington, D.C., or New York City, these big thriving cities with a lot more, you know, public transportation and culture and things like that. And they were like, well, you call Albany City, but it's a small little town. So for them to struggle and get candidates, you can imagine how hard it is for suburban schools to get candidates. So it's, trust me, it's not for a lack of trying. It's, the candidate pool is not diverse at all. And there are issues, when you are able to meet and interview or attract them, sometimes when they come to the area, it's just not what they are looking for either. So there are challenges there. But this is something that the capital district as a whole is working on. It's not, no one district is trying to kind of tackle it on its own because it's a, it is a problem within the entire area.
Yeah, absolutely. I could believe that. And it's just interesting to think about, how do we, how do we work with, overcome and work around hurdles to try and set ourselves up for the most success? Because I know it's a challenge. And then the other question I had, since we have Ms. Governor here, and sorry, I'm pointing up at the screen. I don't know if you can see me, but I was just wondering, just kind of what your thoughts are on where where things are going now, or where you think that we as a board could lean in more to help make your work more successful and the work of the administration and throughout the district?
I'm really pleased with the efforts that have been made so far and the support that the board has given to Jody and Dave in terms of doing this work. I think that a lot more conversations need to be had between the boards and the greater community, so that the community really does have an understanding, not only of the importance of this, but that you as board members support this work. In the pockets of conversations that I've had with the parents, particularly during the workshops, a lot of them did not feel that they were informed in terms of what was going on, or even the position of the board in terms of their willingness to have this happen. So being able to be as transparent as possible, having those pockets of conversations when you bump into neighbors in the grocery stores or even other events, would really kind of take this a longer way and to really let the community know that Jody and Dave and the school system really have the board's full support in these initiatives that they're putting together.
Wonderful, thank you. That's fantastic feedback, I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
And just to add, Catherine, being involved in some of the hiring stuff over the years, I've definitely seen a significant improvement in the hiring recruitment practice where there was a really good focus on the resumes that are coming in and things that would have maybe automatically have not been looked at before. They're taking a much closer look to make sure if there's a candidate that could diversify our community, that we're looking at that very closely and bringing them in for interviews to see, besides just what's written on paper, what they can bring to the community through experiences, through their culture, things that might not just be apparent. And I've definitely seen that transition occur, and it was really nice in the last round to see that happen, and it was, there was a really strong focus on it.
I just wanted to thank Jody for putting together this timeline. I was wondering, what do you see as coming up next on the timeline, 22 to 23?
Well, we want to finish up, we never finished our last session with the larger faculty committee with Harriet, so we want to finish that. And we did develop, we had the audits for each of the buildings in the district. Some of the work from the action plans has, did start and has been implemented, and some of it has not, so we want to circle back to those action plans, making sure they're still relevant. That would be a first step, which also then starts to involve a larger number of our faculty. We'd like to then also get another group to go through some of the workshops that Harriet offers, because they are very powerful, they really give you a solid understanding of the work and why it's important. And the other piece of this is really getting some training, more training to our support staff, which has been very limited. The District Equity Committee also still has a couple of more meetings, two or three, I think, that were scheduled, we schedule those for the year. So based on what the outcome of those meetings will also give us some direction as to maybe what the board should be looking at, what the district should be looking at as well. I don't think, those of you who are on that district committee, much of what we've been talking about is similar to some of the work we've been doing, so nothing has really been a big difference. But I think the community piece is important, for us not to forget that. So those are some of the, I guess, thinking about what is this, maybe the second part, you know, this year or the summer, planning for next year look like? Those are some of the key things I think are important for us to move forward with.
Thank you. And I would just add to that, that one thing that came up at our policy committee meeting, which we had this, since our last meeting, was looking at our, the policies as we go through to do a review of them, where we can make changes to support the work that's being done. Right.
So could I ask, Carrie, I wanted to ask you a question. Like, with any of your other, like, clients, do you have like milestones or timeframe goals that you want like a district or a client to achieve? So I know this is like a lifelong, like, implementation where you're going to constantly be revising and it's, we want everything to happen today, but it's going to take time. And, you know, we have limited resources. So do we have, or you have anything that kind of gives like a timeline, like, this is what we should see like a year, a year and a half from now, not in the midst of a pandemic, but in normal times? Like, do we have, like, just milestones that we should be really, as a board, looking at to achieve?
As you can imagine, in every district, it's going to be different, just because the population is going to be different. And it really has to start with the basis of what you as a district think is the most important part of the conversation to attack. So for example, as we talk about in our workshops, when you're doing a local cultural deficiency, you start with one area or one aspect of your problem of practice, if you will, and you circle back to that once you seem to get that underfoot. I think the fact that your faculty is beginning to recognize, particularly in the E L A and Social Studies Department, the lack of diversity in the presentations and in the material that's being utilized to students is a huge milestone. One of the things that I was pleased to hear when working with the student groups is that the students were starting to see the difference in terms of the work that was, the material that was being presented to them for consideration, and starting to feel more included in the conversations that were happening. And that is huge, because that usually takes a lot longer than the few years that we've been working together to begin to see those kind of steps. But in general, I think it's really going to be dependent upon what you as a district think you want to focus on as being the most important aspect. If it is, for example, taking the part of the framework of creating that welcoming and affirming environment for all the stakeholders, then congratulations, there's already signs of that starting to happen. But it varies from district to district, and sometimes you make steps and you make milestones, and unfortunately, things happen, change of leadership, change of different grammographics, and you end up taking a couple of steps backwards. And I know that's a very circular answer to your question, though. It's just some kind of-
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation, and thank you, Harriet, for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much. Happy holidays to everyone and be well. See you soon.
Thanks, Harriet. Next on our agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have anybody with us this evening who would like to speak on an agenda item, now is the time to come to the microphone. Next, item six, action items, A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following finance action items one and two.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through 13.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items one through 15.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items one through three.
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I, oh, sorry. I just wanted to speak briefly to the policy for temporary home or hospital instruction and its accompanying regulation. I read through it, and there didn't seem to be any reference to virtual instruction, and it seems as though that is what we're utilizing right now in terms of children who are quarantined for, you know, COVID-positive results. So I was wondering if that's something that needs to be addressed in that policy.
So this is, this policy is specifically for someone who's out on a medical, like a longer term, so I wouldn't recommend adding it to this policy because this is a more longer term.
Oh, I mean, when I was reading it, I thought that that's where our instruction for children who are home, you know, because it seemed like a tweak.
Yeah, we don't require this. So this, this particular policy, if you look at the regulation, requires a parent to fill it out, a doctor to fill it out. We don't require that for kids who are on quarantine, we just use the DOH order, and we provide this instruction generally through the classroom teacher. So we're not using this particular process for that reason.
But to touch on that, though, Meredith, like it says, over two weeks, so most likely, most people aren't going to be, they'll be back to school.
Well, I mean-
Hopefully. But you bring up a really good point.
But now that we are using-
Even if it's not COVID-related-
We wouldn't-
Why wouldn't we be inclusive of virtual learning possibly? I mean, I just think about when Delaney was in the hospital, that would have been a godsend to be able to do like virtual instruction or tutoring. So would there be any harm to adding it to the policy?
We'd have to probably look at that. We didn't in the past typically do virtual instruction for home instruction if a student was, obviously, in the hospital, generally, they're not well enough to get instruction. If they're home and they're not able to meet an instructor, then we did provide options for the instructor to go home, go to the home as long as a parent is there.
Right, that's what we had, but I'm thinking like-
Which I think is better, if we can provide that, but-
But there was also a lack of tutors, so I'm thinking if we offer that virtual option, you might get more, I'm just thinking, I mean-
Well, also, I just feel like people now kind of expect that as, as something that we've been able to do, and so if someone was home, say, for three weeks, they may feel more comfortable than inviting someone into their home, just doing virtual instruction. Or the tutors may be more comfortable if there was an issue of, you know, contagion or something like that. I just didn't know why it wasn't even an option in this scenario.
We haven't, just because really, we haven't used it for that purpose.
Oh, yeah, I mean, absolutely, it is new. But if we are renewing the policy at this point, it seems like something that we could add in as an option. Obviously, it's not appropriate in every situation, and obviously, in-person would be better if that's appropriate, but because it's, it's something now that people feel comfortable with, I feel like it's something that we should have as an option.
Could we put it back into the policy committee just for re-review for that language or have more discussion on it?
Yeah, that's fine. We can do that. Willow, did you have something you wanted to say?
Just real quickly, on the gender-neutral bathroom policy, just, I appreciate taking the implicit and making it explicit. We, at our DEI committee meeting, and I think here at a board meeting, as a readout, we talked about sharing draft policies with student stakeholders to get feedback, and I wondered, this seems to me like a good one to potentially share a draft with a student group that would have interest in it, and I don't know.
We did.
We talked about a mechanism to do that.
Yep, we did. It was shared with, actually, we had the policy committee meeting, and the next day, we had a question about language in it, and Mike Mitchell was meeting with the-
The GSA?
Yeah, GSA. So they actually looked at the policy and provided feedback.
I love that story. That was all I had.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have anyone who would like to speak on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to come forward. Item eight, future meetings and events. Our next board meeting is on Wednesday, January 5th, 2022.